All right, being called a order indication by Mr. Don Mack followed by please, Mr. Mike Nichols.
Turn the volume to come to be right now in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask first of all, as you forgive us for all our sins, by a thought when indeed against your divine majesty. Lord, we just thank you for another day, thank you for the rain, thank you for the sunshine. We know you know how much we need, so we won't even say it's too much, but we just thank you for it. And Lord, we ask you as coming to this meeting that the words of our mouth and meditation our heart accept me in your sight. Lord, we just thank you that we be able to meet and ask you the best to sit up central and guide us and keep us and protect all the citizens of Central. And those all over the world, in the name of Jesus, we ask for these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell us a roll call, anybody? Need approval of the minutes. Motion by Mr. Mike, need a second.
Second.
Second is Diane, any discussion questions? All in favor, aye, anybody? All right, y'all, we got us that zoning board ordinance. Mitch, you want, you need to talk about it, any?
This is just the ordinance that is gonna allow the city council to select who's on the zoning board rather than the mayor.
From each district, so.
Right.
All right, need a motion for that.
I got that motion.
Don, second, Mac, second, Brad, aye, any discussion questions? All in favor, aye, anybody?
Do we have a copy of that ordinance?
Oh, I didn't print it out, I'll get it in just a second.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Terry Morton.
Young man.
Has, yeah, he's, he has requested to come for the council in the matter of annexation.
I appreciate your commitment to and time to the city of Central. Some of you were on the board when I presided over this office for a few years. And one of the plans we had back in two thousand sixteen seventeen was trying to expand the city limits for the opportunity of economic growth uh, over a period of time. Of course, we know time sometimes doesn't wait for us. So, uh, we have good plans about downtown in the courthouse square. But I also believe that in order for you have to have economic growth, you need to have more people in your city limits because of paying taxes and buying goods and so that was one of our plans, in fact, our, our city attorney, we worked together Mitch and I and the council at that present time to try to expand down highway eighty-two east and also highway five. And my present property is on that, is in that area, it's actually in the corporate limits. Uh, about one mile south of Schultz's Creek. Uh, I talked to Ms. Diane a few months ago about this. And, you know, one of the things I'd like to be, to have is city water now. We've had, we've got two wells, we got a lot of water in that area. In fact, there's a well that the city of Central has about a mile from my house. But the guy that did our wells said we have a tremendous amount of water. Uh, the water board may want to investigate that in, in the future if that's in their interest. When you do have expansion, you got you, you gotta have your infrastructure in place, whether it be water or sewer. So, uh, I do, I would like to have water, of course, that would bring more revenue as a customer to the city and the waterworks. Uh, so, uh, in that, in that previous plan, one of the things was to expand Schultz's Creek. Uh, being in the, in that northern direction, northwest area, so, uh, also you would have more people in the municipality for voting. And not just in my area, but you know, these other areas that were discussed several years ago. So I'd like the council to consider, uh, a motion to accept that, that we be able to get in the city limits and be part of that, uh, that particular plan. And, uh, I don't know if council's aware of this, in the ten year plan with the water board, they were going to try to get water in that area anyway. But that's not our primary objective to get city water, but you know, it'd be nice to have city water. Uh, but like I say, I'd like to be in the city of Central.
So maybe tonight, we're just worried about annexation of, of Mr. Morton's property, which is.
Well, I do know, uh, and excuse me, Mr. Oakley, about that, uh, there's a property across that where we're living is in annex, where there's a subdivision being developed. There's actually nobody living there. So, uh, we live pretty close and Mitch, what was that term was used about being that close in proximity?
Contiguous.
Contiguous, yes, okay, so that's what we're asking. That's all I have, you got any other questions, ask me. I'll be glad to try to answer, I may not know the answer.
Well, I will just say, when we talked, your main concern sounded like it was to be to get water. And I just knew deep down, we can't afford to put city water to your houses.
Well, that's not a, uh, a great need, Ms. Diane.
That's fine, you just said.
I have two wells that are outstanding, I, I don't need water right now. Uh, in seven, eight years, if the water board approves that, which that would not be, uh,
City council.
Even a issue with the city council, that'd be an issue with the Central Water Works. If they have that in their plan and if they desire, uh, you know, there's, there's city water outside of city limits. That the city of Central Water Works provides to county customers.
Yes.
Uh, one of the things I would suggest, and it, you know, I don't know how you folks as a council feel about this. A lot of times when you've got competing towns or cities, if one doesn't make the move for annexation, especially with zoning, then another may make that move. You see what I'm saying?
Simple.
So, I don't know if Brent has an interest, but I strongly suspect on eighty-two west in that region going north, they probably do have an interest. So, it's like, sort of like a game you play in, in sports. You want to take that step ahead that will be beneficial to your pockets in that municipality, so that's all I'm asking.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion for the annexation.
Motion made by Mr. Mike Nichols, need a second. Need a second. So no second, the motion fails like a second. Apologize. Be nice if we had reasons for not extending.
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
The property that Terry is talking about in two nineteen, that property's already got water. The city of Central.
This don't have to do with water, this is annexation.
I mean, but he just said the water, I mean, uh.
Yeah, well, he's asking about the annexation, but you're right, he doesn't have water for many years. But that, but that, that's not even in our, all he's asking is to be annexed in the city of Central. Which would expand our city limits.
I just think we need to wait until.
I have another thing, Mr. Terry.
Or the other, you know, whoever comes in.
Why would you, what, what's the reasoning, Mike?
I mean.
It's not gonna change anything, he's gonna still want to be annexed into the city.
I realize that.
As a matter of, you know, whatever.
I will say this, after speaking with Ms. Diane, what, three months ago, uh, I would have thought that some of you may have contacted me personally and talked to me and maybe came up, came up to that property to probably look at. So I didn't, obviously, you didn't have any interest or did your research about that property. So what I'm saying, there is potential to get water, and it's not all about water. It's about what I just talked about. Which is if the city of Central wants some kind of economic growth, you've got to include people. Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
What part of our strategic plan?
I just have to live right outside the city limits. And the plan for the water board, which does not even consider, consider what the council was talking about, because the council has nothing to do with the water board. The water board controls the water. So in their ten year plan, they do have that. And I will say another thing, I received a letter asking to be considered a few years ago, if I would like yes or no to be in the city limits. So I checked, yes. So if the city of Central is reaching out to residents outside of the city limits and showing interest to bring them into city limits, I don't see where there's an issue. So that's just.
You do what you've always done, you get what you've always got.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, new business, so on Main Street.
Miss Kay, you got your thing?
Um, sure, I have a couple of dates, I don't have my, uh, my printer had some malfunctions, apologies, I don't have any any handouts, but, um, our facade grant that we started in the fall of last year has wrapped up. Um, there's some more construction going on up there, but then there's just different phases of the project that did not include, um, in the scope of ours, but I'm excited to announce that that twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we started out with um, led to a total investment of one hundred and nine thousand and five hundred and forty-one dollars. Um, which I think is just great, we've been telling everybody, I can actually email you guys the document after this meeting or maybe tomorrow with all the fore and after pictures, it's just interesting to, to look at. Um, there was a total of ten projects, and like I said, um, it started out with twenty-five thousand and with the matching grants and everybody, all the business owners who chose to, to put in far more for their project, it ended up being a hundred and nine thousand. And, um, just as a board thing that was important to, to mention and, um, yeah, the river crawl went good, I told you guys last time that I'd tell you about the volunteer hours, we had a, about a hundred, or four hundred and twenty volunteer hours for the river crawl between thirty to thirty-five volunteers, so I think it's something important to point out, because that, that event did go very well, I know most of y'all attended and it's just, um, important to, to also talk about the, the behind the scenes where that's not any of my hours that I put in, that's all volunteer hours and, um, board member hours of the community that, that they devoted towards that, that mission, but thank you.
Thank you. Awesome stuff going up, see you to change by the day. Chief Spence said he did anything to report tonight, all right, anybody else?
Oh, I don't know if this is new business, well, new business, whatever, but what we're doing with the, about the vape store being close to the school.
Mitch, you want to talk about that?
There's no longer a restriction on how close the, the, uh, a vape store can be to a school, there was a former uh, statute that gave counties the ability to limit, uh, how close proximity one of these stores could be to a school, but that, uh, that, uh, statute has been rescinded, the latest, uh, it was the House Bill eight that came out of the legislature that had all of these restrictions on what vape stores could sell and not sell and who could shop there and criminal sanctions for violating the policies in that legislation, they, uh, they took that out, but there is no, there's nothing that a municipality can do to keep, uh, keep that store from being where it is.
So the one that, the act that was done in two thousand nineteen in May has been taken away?
That's correct.
Sad.
And we've, and I've, I've consulted the league about this as well, and they, and they've told me there's nothing that, uh, you know, that can be done at this point.
It's sad.
Uh, we, have we already issued a license?
Yeah.
We did. So we, at the, at the time, we had no, there was nothing in place, now, now the council can pass an act that would limit, or, or pass an ordinance that could limit the amount or number or locations of these stores, but we don't have that right now, so when they came in to get a license, there was nothing that could be done to say no, the council's about to pass an ordinance keeping you from being there.
I believe we had that in, in a F A and somebody took it away.
Chief, of, of the calls I get from the S R O officers, how many, how many of them involve vapes and, and things of that nature, you get a lot of them?
We get at least ten to twelve a semester. Uh, we got one the other day where a sixteen year old went in and bought a vape. And his dad come in and a little upset about that. Uh, and we're checking into that, we're, we're trying to take, and I don't mind telling you, I'm trying to take some juveniles in there to see if they will buy or let them buy and charging them with it, uh.
They should be.
And we have been successful a couple of times with that, so, but they're, they're not as much buying them as they're getting them from the parents. And then they hide them in their backpacks for them, so, and we run into quite a bit of that.
And they're disguised in all kinds of ways.
Hey, Mitch.
Yes.
Is there any kind of way that from now when their, their license being sold, they come to the council first, like they do in the big cities and stuff?
Well, you've got to have, you've got to have an ordinance in place that would restrict the granting of a license to certain businesses. Or to say that those businesses have to come before the council.
Yeah, we're working on doing that. We're operating under the, under the assumption that the, that the law still held, and we're gonna shut them down, but it's not there anymore.
That's sad.
Oh, yeah, I ain't doing it, I wish you'd let me finish. Mitch, we can get an ordinance that for after, to, after today, if we make a motion, can we get a ordinance to that we can bring all licenses to, before the council before we issue?
No, you can, you can have an ordinance that would limit certain businesses that you would consider to be a nuisance. Uh, such as if you're thinking, if you're thinking that a vapor tobacco shop would be a nuisance or uh, a bar or something like that, yes, you could have an ordinance that would require that, but just generally having an ordinance that would limit any business, that every business license has to be approved, because you can't, you know, willy-nilly say we, we don't want to have this kind of business here if there's not already an ordinance that prevents it or limits it.
Could we put an ordinance, ordinance in place just like the state had with, with a certain footage range that we won't allow that type of business within certain, certain footage of a, of a school?
I think that we can do that, but you're going to have to, you know, it will affect the current businesses there.
Yeah, they're grandfathered in, but I'm saying going forward, could we, could we do it?
I don't, I don't see why not.
By proximity?
Sure.
Now, now the state has one already for schools and churches for alcohol, am I right?
That's right.
But this would be.
We can't overrule that, we can't go over there, but we can amend it to have it, like for Central. Um, it says we, uh, a bar, uh, uh, a dance club, a.
Well, your alcohol ordinance is gonna limit that anyway, I mean, you've got, tho- those have got to be approved to get the, you know, to get a, a license to sell alcohol. And, you know, now they can, they can appeal you to the, uh, you know, to the A B C board, but you know, you can, right now, I think our ordinance is pretty restrictive when it comes to to selling alcohol.
Well, I, I mean, I think most of everybody is concerned about the school.
Right. I think, I, I can't speak for the legislature, I, I think that their reasoning was in putting the criminal penalties in for the retailers, that that was going to be the, the thing that prohibited the sales.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
That's what, that's what we're working on, that ordinance to limit vape, we can, we can put, the league told us that, uh, we could do an ordinance attached to the business licenses that would limit vape stores, anything like that, so we can set the limits. Just got caught, caught off guard by the, by the new law. Because everybody thought that what, that they couldn't be within a thousand feet of a school.
Right.
So when we issued the license though, did we not know that was in effect then?
No, no, there was no, I mean.
There, there was nothing in effect then, I mean, there was nothing that restricted them.
Yeah, there was no reason.
But we had it, but y'all didn't know that it'd been taken away, right?
Well, I, I do.
So we hid it thinking there was something then though.
No, we, I, I was called right away and, and checked on it right away. We didn't issue a license just because somebody came in to get one. I was consulted immediately and dropped everything and got an answer.
Oh, okay, well, you, when I text Mike, he said we're working on it, but after it went on Facebook, and I thought, oh no.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You said I'm working on it, so I didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had already reached out, because we were under the, we were, in fact, chief had already called and asked about it, we were, we were in the process of moving forward and pulling the business license, under the law, which is now changed.
Do, do we need to make a motion to, to put an ordinance together to, to limit that in the future as far as proximity to a school or?
I think we can just, we can just get an ordinance up, let everybody look at it, see if you like it, and we'll just do it then, we'll vote on the ordinance, put it in place.
But Mitch.
Yes.
I like what Brad just said.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, can we get an ordinance to prevent it? I mean, that would be grandfathered in, but can we?
Yeah.
Put one, you have a.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, do we need a motion on that or what?
If you want to pass such an ordinance, you can, you can get me, you know, there are a lot of things to, to do to get an ordinance going, but if that's what y'all want to do, vote on it the same way you voted to put the ordinance together to change who selected the people on zoning board.
Right.
And then we can go through the process, sure.
That's what I'm talking about. Do we need a motion now or?
You can.
Check your, check your footage before you make it.
Yeah.
Check your distance before you speak too soon.
I'm not, I'm not doing specifics, I'm just saying that we, we getting an ordinance, this is a first step, this, like you said, this is the beginning.
I mean, we're already, we're already in the process of drafting an ordinance, so don't you think that we ought to be looking at the ordinance before we like to do it, we don't.
Well, you're not actually, you're not actually passing the ordinance, they're just, they're just authorizing me to do it forward.
We are just authorizing him to, we making a motion just to authorize him to do it, and when he does it, then he'll bring it back to us, we must get over. Then we don't have to prove it, and we'll look at the footage and then, you cannot wait it. But this is the beginning, am I right Mitch? Is this the first step?
Sure.
The motion?
We've been motion.
A motion.
All right, my motion is second.
Second.
Brad, any discussion question, all in favor? All right, anybody else?
Mitch, if you had a chance to look into that problem in that subdivision, people are contacting me about the Airbnb.
Yeah, just like, like I, I said last time, I mean, Airbnb is not, I've gotten some information on whether if we, if we want to authorize Airbnbs in certain areas, we can do that, but right now, they're not authorized. Not in an R one, and that subdivision is definitely R one.
Okay. I'll tell them again then.
How does the lodging tax apply to Airbnb, Mitch?
Well, I mean, we would have to, uh, have an ordinance that, that would, you know, set, set a, uh, a press, a, a value for the Airbnb. If we were going to allow the Airbnb, then they would need to be able to pay the lodging tax, whatever it is.
And they would also have to have a business license, do you know that, Mitch?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
They have to have a business license and they'd have to pay the lodging tax.
Do we have an existing Airbnb for them to see?
Yeah, one across the river from the, uh, you know, Lager Lager used to be, down on, you know, across South Globe, there's an Airbnb down there. We got lodging, we've already got lodging tax, but I think it's gotta be specific to Airbnb, because those are more like Vance Ellison, Vance Ellison.
Right.
Yeah.
Was it the one right there, Hall Cleveland?
But I understand that Vance Ellison pays the lodging tax.
They do. I got a check last week.
Yeah.
They do.
So we really, I guess, that's something we need to look at in the future is, is as Airbnb's become, become more popular here with, especially with the, with the river and the floats that we got going up and down the river. And if we, if we had more of those come in, that's some, some, right now, it's some missed revenue that we're not capturing, uh, which is not any volume to it right now, but I'm just saying, moving forward, that may be something we need to look at as far as making either that lodging tax applicable to Airbnb or setting a different set aside, uh, lodging tax for Airbnb.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, get a hotel, let's just get lots of Airbnb.
Yeah.
Because we could ensure you.
Nothing wrong, nothing wrong with them, they're good.
No, no, they're still, in fact, there's a, got a friend that's got Airbnb in the oven, it stays raining.
Because I mean, that park, it's full there, just sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing wrong with it, at all. Like anybody else?
I've got one more question than, than being in mine, uh, at the last meeting, uh, you know, we had taken some money out of seven cent gas tax, we haven't taken any more, have we?
Um, no.
Okay, so the sixty-three thousand, that's all that's been taken out of it?
Um, yeah, we haven't taken anything out of it since.
Okay, I know that, oh, seven cents gas tax is earmarked for certain things.
Yes, for the street part.
And that's concerning, so, okay, let's see in the mind.
So Tracy, I know we got the, the bank statement in front of us that runs through five thirty-one basically, dates on that. I know as of, as of last week, our general, general fund balance was a hundred dollars in the account.
Yes.
Uh, what have we done in the, in the past week, I guess, what's the standing of that, how do we?
Um, we have collected a little bit of, um, like alcohol tax and a few things like that. We transferred a little bit from the court account to cover Teresa's salary. Um, so, but we're still, we still are not anywhere near running payroll this coming payroll, and I've got a file right here that's got thirty-five thousand dollars worth of bills in it to pay.
So how are we going to do that?
Um, we have been talking to Don, he's coming down Friday, um, to look and see if there's any way we can, um, if there's any reimbursements that need to be made or anything like that, um, and hopefully the sales tax in next week.
Yeah, next week.
Come in.
Mike, what's driving this deficit, I mean, is, is it just the fact, I know we had a lot of, of back payments that weren't, weren't made uh, from, from mistakes that were made previously, uh, is that, is that kind of what's putting us in a hole, I guess?
I mean, this time of year, it always gets thin, this time of year, it always gets thin, and it builds back up.
And that's what we said in December.
What's that?
That we always get bad, they blow in December because of business tax.
End of the year, and then, you know, we get business tax, it's coming to the end of the month, sitting, I'm at the end of the month, like this month. So, you know, the, the money that was paid out was actually what we owe, if you're talking about the hour is what we owed, so, really, that was already, that was already owed, it just gets thin this time of year, then it builds back up. Every year, I mean, you can go back and look at, at the fund balance every year, it, it just does that. And we impose a no spending moratorium, you know, for a month, you know, just non essentials, but, and then we mend back up.
But we haven't been able to see that, because we don't get financials. But we haven't been able to see that, cause we don't get financials.
Yeah, we can get financials.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't got a financial in forever.
I think y'all can get financials.
Well, the next, I, I'll have the new software up and running, hopefully next week, and hopefully that will be. I'll be able to get enough in it to give you support.
I mean, do we need to, do we need to put a spending moratorium in place, Mike, I mean, do we need to try to make some cuts somewhere?
Oh yeah, we've already cut everybody off.
Can I tell me what y'all could?
Um, well, I, I mean, there ain't no go to Walmart, there ain't no good on Amazon, there ain't no, I mean, we're not buying anything, we're not. We're just not spending anything, it, I mean, if it's in this bill, if it's in this folder and it's due, I'll figure out how to pay it, but other than that, it ain't. It ain't going out. Yeah, I'm holding y'all's checks, I, I printed y'all's checks, but I'm holding them. You can't have them yet. I'm like, sorry Charlie, but, you know.
What, is any of, are y'all paying the mayor?
Oh, no, I haven't paid him either.
You haven't paid none of them?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Not even him?
Dorinda, I have a question, you might wanna get out of that question. Um, I keep getting late notices from, uh, my sales tax, and I paid the sales tax in January, I bought my business license and everything. And I'm up to date, and I'm sure I am not the only one getting late. Uh, business license notice, has anybody else complained about it?
From Avenue?
Yes.
We've had some trouble through the years with Avenue, you know, not giving, not sending business license, like.
They don't ever send me mine.
That's crazy, and what we'll do is reach out to them and say, hey, why are the late notices when everybody's current?
I meant to bring it last month, and I forgot a minute ago, cause I just got in.
We'll jump on that morning.
So, okay, cause I pay my business license, and I pay my taxes every month, so.
If you'll send me a picture of the notice, I'll call them in the morning and find out what's going on.
Okay.
I know we're talking about financials here again, but, uh, I know y'all, last week I wasn't here, y'all, y'all, I watched the video, but, uh. Y'all voted to do the forensic audit, um. We gotta pay for that, obviously, if we're gonna do it, um, so. You know, that's, that's gonna be a pretty large expense, uh, when, when do you think Don's gonna be through with?
He's coming Friday, and, uh, I think he may be through with the water side.
Yeah, he is.
He come Friday to wrap with it.
Yeah, wrap, which one of?
The city.
The city, he's already through the water.
So, he gonna have to figures that it's gonna be on, cause before he said, when he was, he came, well. He came to the desk, he didn't say it. Not now, maybe in, in a couple of weeks, maybe, and he said, it's all mixed up. We're hoping that.
Which we're talking about, yeah.
We're, we're hoping that, that he uncovered some stuff that we really need to address with, with Mitch. That is a thing that we definitely need to address, uh, where he admitted pieces what he's telling us, and. It ain't no secret, cause it's all in the street, but, we definitely gonna have to go and have it addressed with Mitch. And see how, how we gonna proceed.
Don, if rumors are in the street, then it's hard for you to squelch rumors, and then, unless you know what you're talking about, you know.
Well, it's something what the auditor said, unless we need to fire him.
I'm talking about unless you know what you're talking about.
I do know what I'm talking about, I wouldn't be up here if I wouldn't.
Do you know what the auditor's goals are?
I know what the auditor's goal, I'm saying, I'm telling you.
Saying we need to wait on the auditor to give a report, I'm, I'm with you.
I know you wanna wait, I know you wanna wait, but I'm not.
I don't wanna wait.
I, I'm, all I'm saying is this might, and you're talking about two different things than what I'm talking about, I don't know if you're understanding me or not, or not. I said, what he said up here, when it was all tumbled up, mixed in together. And he told, he just shook his head, and I said, mm, and I said, well, he said, give us, leave him a couple of weeks, so. When he come back, I said, these were, one more time, we need to see. What he's uncovered, and do we need to deal and talk with Mitch about what he untalks? That's all I said, n- never said, that's what you said, I said.
Which is why we need to wait on him to finish what he's doing.
Ain't that what I just said?
That's what I just said.
No, you, no, no, no.
We voted to do the forensic audit regardless, so we gotta come up with the money somewhere.
And, and, and when it gets to the legal part, I said, we'll get with Mitch and see what we.
No, I said, we need to wait for the auditor to make his report and come with, come with the corrections. Same thing I've been saying, let's move on, let's move on.
Let me finish, let me finish, don't stop, I'm city, I'm the city council, it's the city council meeting. All I'm saying again to you guys, we need to see what we need to see, whatever the auditor come, if it not, if it. If it's something that we need to deal with, we need to make sure we get what I said attorney, and see what we go from there. That's all I said, we don't know what it is.
If we need to, you're right, we don't know, we don't know.
That's what I said.
Well, and, and in regards to that forensic audit, you know, that's, that's one thing that the, that the auditors are gonna want, is for us to have good. Legal counsel, uh, in regards to any findings, uh, and even before we, we start with, with a forensic audit. We need to take a hard look at that audit that Don's doing, and, and get with Mitch, see what's found, and then, you know, that'll give us. More justification to step into that, that forensic audit, um, if, if and when the time some things, but. It's, uh, it's, it's gonna be expensive, we don't, we don't have any money right now, I mean, it's obvious, uh. Well, you know, we, we gotta put our heads together and figure out what way we wanna go on, it's, uh.
You've got the company though, already that you've talked to, like.
I, I got the, the guy that I talked to y'all about, probably was it six months ago?
Yeah, I wrote it down, I could, I remember his name, but I remember you saying you had the price and the name.
It was James Simonian Farmer, one of their affiliates.
I mean, you hate, you hate that it comes down to something, something like that.
Well, I mean, I was just saying that we needed to wait on our auditor to make recommendations, and one of the recommendations is always out there. That you need to do a forensic audit, if he says we don't need to, he's doing a deep dive, then we have acted irresponsibly and fiscally irresponsibly. In jumping into fiscal audit, of, of, audit when we don't need.
Like you just said, we don't know that yet.
We kinda know it when we're down to a hundred dollars in the bank account, we need a forensic audit. Well, we had no money.
I mean, I'm just saying, when you, well, when you vote to do a forensic audit, and you're limited on funds, which, we're not, we're, if we had three grocery stores and Walmart. Totally there, totally there.
Can I say, if you look at this, um, if you look at the deposits right here. Um, that seventy-six thousand, I can tell you right where every bit of that came from. Um, that top number was reimbursed from, the sixteen thousand, that was a reimbursement from the water department. Um, the nine thousand was from court fees and some land tax. The two thousand was, um, some little, uh, alcohol tax kinda stuff. Fifty-one fifty was DHR's rent. The six hundred and ninety-four was, um. I can't read my shorthand, I'll have to think about that one, um, the eight thousand was from probate land tax and. TBA, I'm not sure what TBA is, but it comes from the county commission.
You get money from being a dry county.
Um, the twenty thousand. Is twenty thousand dollars that I moved from the one percent to cover some checks that we had to pay out. Um, the hundred and thirteen was just some, um, again, some little, uh, limb pickup kinda stuff that we took in. Thirteen thousand was taxes, sales tax and license, business license fees, so if you look at that, sixteen and twenty. Thirty-six thousand of that was not really income that we took in, so out of that seventy-six. Twen- fifty thousand is all we took in for the month, I mean, seriously, that's all the city general fund took in.
Was fifty?
Fifty.
What was our expenditure per month?
Um, turn the page, eighty-nine.
We live beyond our means.
So, I mean, this, this is just me talking as your accountant here.
Yeah.
Um, we, we gotta figure out some income, I mean, there's just not, I mean, business license and sales tax ain't gonna carry us.
And that, that plays into annexation, business recruitment, I think that's about it.
So Mike, the, the city is an at-will employer, correct, Mitch?
Alabama is, Alabama is.
Alabama's an at-will state, but we've got an employee handbook that gives our employees some rights. Other than at-will.
I'm just saying, if, if you had to, if you had to eliminate positions, uh, you could eliminate positions. That, that position no longer exists, if you had to cut, have some cutbacks.
I'd have to look at that.
And also, the health insurance did not even come out of this account, it came out of one percent. And I was working.
One percent raise on the taxes, that was a huge boost for us during Mayor Morton's term. So I don't understand why.
Well, the one percent goes into a whole different account, and I was working on balancing that, I just didn't get it finished before we had to come in here. Um, and there is, there is some income in there, but al- also that accounts down to like forty right now, um. But the health insurance came out of that, some Alabama power, that kinda stuff come out of that, um.
So it sounds like we need to do more than just the spending moratorium, it sounds like we need to re- review what, what we're spending.
Well, and I would say that since Dorinda came in, she went through all the bills, she cut down the AT&T bill, she cut down. The, I don't know what else, but she went through a lot of them and cut some, cut a lot of it back. And found some stuff that we were just, um. It, that was just getting filled out, and so, hopefully in the next month, that's gonna show, but. You know, until some of that rotates a cycle, we're just not gonna.
So you gonna do it again?
If there's something to cut, we'll cut it.
Yeah, well, I said, one more time.
Well, I mean, she cut back a lot of cell phone stuff and, and, and all that kinda stuff that nobody was really using, and nobody had really paid attention to. And so.
Do we know now that all our cell phones are for the people that are working with us now? Okay, great.
Where, where are we Mitch on the, uh, technology company trying to get some of that money back?
Well, once we get the, everything switched over. And we aren't relying on, you know, if they can't withhold any of our information, then that's something we can pursue.
Yeah, hopefully I'll have our software running this week, and the water department's already running something else. So, hopefully by the end of this week. We can move out of it.
I have a question, but I think I'm gonna wait till the auditor come and ask him, but I'll tell you about it.
Um. Oh, um, check signers, um, I know, Mike, I know you're on there as a check signer, and, and I think. Mike Nichols probably is a check signer.
Mike Tracy, uh, Teresa.
Could, could we, and I don't wanna be on it, this is not, I'm, I'm out of town all the time traveling, but I, I think we oughta add one of. Whoever, council members, uh, not only for just, like, for instance, when you and I were at the, the meeting, uh, we were out of town. Uh, you know, you, I think you need to add a check signer, my, my motion would be we add another check signer on there. Uh, out of, out of one of the council members, uh, not only for check signing, but visibility of, of seeing. What's in the account, to know that we got a hundred dollars in the account, I wouldn't have known that unless I came up here and talked to Tracy. Uh, and wouldn't have known the shape we were in, you know, it's, uh. I just happened to be up here paying a water bill, and I stopped in to talk to Tracy, see how things were going, and she said, well, not, not so rosy. Uh, so I, you know, I think, I don't know if we need a motion to do that, or how we need to do that, but, or, or one of y'all needs to volunteer.
Mitch, how we do that?
Mister Nickel, Mister Mike Nichols is on there.
Yeah, Mike's on there.
Mike, Mike and Tracy and who?
Teresa.
I'm Tracy.
Yeah.
I don't want, that's not for me, I'm just, I'm just saying, it'd be good for when y'all will be on.
It would be on.
Who?
You.
Yeah, we, we, well, his wife works at a.
But Matthew and I were put on it, would we still be on there, we, we hadn't been voted off?
We have to redo the signature papers every time.
Vote at all.
Somebody rotates in the.
Proper procedure.
But I, but it never was asked to do it, I didn't wanna be on it then either, but it was brought up then, and Matthew and I went down there and signed it. But I know we've opened a new account since then, supposedly we got with fraud or something. One time, years ago, hacked or something, and stuff, but to take anybody off, you have to do minutes to do that.
You wanna do?
I'm not, I'm not hearing of. I'm, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not hearing of, if something was.
Now, Mike, cause Mike is already on the side. Mike's already on it, so you talking about having another person that bother.
Okay, I do Mitch.
Yeah, you do it, don't.
Do we need a motion for that Mitch?
Go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion with Don.
Brad, motion, uh, uh, second.
Uh, second.
Second, now you need to discuss the questions, all the favor.
Dorinda, I have a real quick question. I know when you coming in, it's a sinking ship, and it looks like we're still sinking, and I appreciate you trying to do cutbacks. And I'm just gonna throw something out there, and I don't mean to step on anybody's toes or nothing like that, but, uh. Correct me if I'm wrong, a family coverage of insurance is almost twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, for a family.
I technically do not know, cause I have not looked into that.
Hundred a month, sometimes, now I understand that we pay, uh, single and full, which I'm okay with that. But if we had to cut back, how many people have got, uh, family coverage? Would that help any, would that save?
How many you say?
There's a lot.
And that's one of our, our benefits and perks to get the employees.
To get employees and keeping employees.
Yeah, I know, but law cities don't pay hundred percent on their.
But guess what, when they don't get a paycheck, thanks Danny.
I will find out how many, and how much it is.
Said, I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, I'm like you, I was just trying to weigh with the say.
Don, I was supposed to see the pay seventy-five percent.
I'll, I'll call Ms. Rosie and ask her.
I mean, I don't wanna hurt anybody, I mean, cause I know how important insurance is.
You wanna be able to keep your jobs.
Just trying to find some way to save a little bit of money.
It's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be some cuts the way that, the way she just broke that down, what she just gave us, uh, just look for some cuts. Wash the nun.
We need to revisit the council's raises for next year then.
Don't match, don't vote, don't.
I mean, fair is fair, all right, fair is fair, if you don't cut something, you cut it all.
Tracy, do stand my cheek.
We ain't look at everything, everything.
Seriously.
What?
Uh, what about AmeriGas, we ain't heard anything from them, have we?
No, they have, they have, uh, put their plant in mothballs, as they put it, uh. I know that they have, they were contrary to the press release that got put on social media. They were issued a, a letter of concern by the liquefied petroleum gas board that cited several. Violations of AmeriGas's policy and the policies of the, um. Gas board, but there was a press release that they put out that said. That nobody was at fault, and they were not criminally at fault, but they were, they were. told that they had several violations and it would be put in their record. And right now, I believe they're, uh, once they remove the gas, which they did last week, now their permit for that site is canceled. So, it's just the armory out there right now.
So, are they, what, what's their standing, are they waiting on us to, to tell them they can open back up, give them a license, or, I mean, what's, what are they, where they at?
Well, they can't, they can't open back up without a license, so, you know, their license has been suspended. Um, I, I, I don't know what the, the future of that property is, is gonna be, somebody else is gonna try to buy it. But, um, they don't need to be there in the middle of a hospital.
Mike, in one of our meetings, you said you had two or three places that they thought they might wanna go, have you talked to them about those places?
Oh, yeah, we, you know, we met with them, they admitted guilt, you know, fault, negligence. And, um, we told them that we would, we would help them, the elephant in the room was the location. That we were against anything they did, in fact, we thought they were a good business and, and, uh, anyway, you know, Brad, Brad was one of the ones that said he had some property, you know, so we, you know, we, we gave a couple of names, whether they called him or not. You know, I don't know.
But they got cleared of everything, right, the state car, I mean, all that.
He just said that they were issued.
They were issued a letter of concern because of the violations, they, they violated the policy.
Well, I thought they got cleared, I was trying to answer, okay.
Well, that was, there was a, there was a post on Facebook that was wrong. And, uh, and we knew that, before, the post on Facebook, in fact, I called the reporter and said, hey, you need to correct that, because we have not gotten to date Mitch, we hadn't gotten a letter from the fire marshal.
The fire marshal still hasn't completed their report, the gas board has completed theirs, but then they, the, the gas board issued them the letter of concern.
Yeah. And their, I guess their thing with the location is, is that they, they like that type of structure, type of building and it's hard to find that, that type of structure and building out.
Perfect place for that type of business.
Away, away from everything.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I think that, you know, historically, you're gonna find, tho- those, those businesses like to sneak into little towns like ours.
Yeah.
And, you know, when they came here, everybody thought they were gonna be filling gas tanks like you were at Tractor Supply, they, you know, they didn't know they were doing it by the truckload and that there would be thousands of gallons of explosive, you know, material stored out there, right in the middle of a medical zone in a retirement community. But, you know, it took the, it took the fire and the explosion to expose that. There've been complaints about the smell out there for years, so.
Did you tell us one time that, when you look back at the files, that you should never saw where the council approved them, we give them licenses?
I never, I never saw, the, see, they were zoned, that, they're zoned V one, which is general business, they were never zoned to have explosive materials. They would've had to have had council approval to get that and they never got it.
I remember us not going nowhere.
You wanna?
I think, I, that's all I have, I hear.
Um, on the, um, I'm back to the firehouse again. Uh, we know that we can't live forever, not gonna live forever, and there's a lot of things that we've done that we have not put in place. And, uh, I just feel we need to put some things in place and let them be there so when the time come, we already got them there. That's what ordinance is for, y'all understand that? And we got, we know that he's got a contract to stay in there, you said he got a contract, we haven't seen it yet, but I like for us to go ahead, with, nobody's gonna live forever and put a ordinance for what the rent gonna be when we get somebody to go in there. And what the price gonna be for them to go in there. Y'all understand?
Yeah, yeah.
When we do get somebody in, when we get somebody going there, it's already set, Mike, you gotta bring three hundred dollars over to get in there. Okay? That's what we already got, cause we got so much stuff that's coming up.
What am I going in there for?
Know where we going. But anyway, anyway, we got so much stuff coming up and we forgetting some of the stuff, that's when I said, when you said, wait, wait, now, let's put it in place now, because we got so many stuff that's coming up and then we are forgetting it and we don't, and then when, when we come back to it, we wish we had have did it a long time ago. So, I'm just gonna say, for the rent of the firehouse, when the department that we, in the future, we gonna, uh, set a rent of eight hundred dollars a month to come and go to the city, city revenue.
But that wouldn't be in the form of a ordinance, would it?
Well, that, that is, that is what, that, it, it don't have to be a ordinance, it can be a motion.
A motion is different, we'd have to be a ordinance, would you?
Let's watch the contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight hundred dollars a month and the fund goes to the, uh, general fund.
The rent goes to general.
General fund.
I second, I, I mean, you, you made a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, it's, it's income, if, if, if it's, uh.
What you're talking about, when the current occupants' contract is over.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
This would be a future tenant.
Correct.
All right.
Um.
Is that enough?
I don't know, I mean, I'd, I'd, I mean, I'd rather wait till that time to see what fair market value is for that square footage.
Me and you may not be here, so, that's why I'm making it now and it'll be there, but whoever gonna be here next, the next, after, after, uh, August, it'll be there.
You could just do a motion then to look at, to, uh.
I'm, I'm gonna do a motion.
To do fair market value at that point, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, that's good.
Sound good.
Right.
I'll make that motion then, for fair market price.
Second.
Any discussion questions, all in favor? We both, same side.
Oh, one more thing, Mike, since, uh, that, you, you doing that made me think of something, uh, the state of, of where we're at right now financially, uh, we've got that dump truck that we're not gonna make a payment on until next year. Um, we don't really have a need for that dump truck, we, we all have seen that and kind of agreed to that. Can we, Mike, can you reach out maybe to the, to the county or, or whoever and see if they would buy that?
Yeah.
Away from us to, to get us out in front of that, cause we definitely don't need a, a, another payment coming up.
Be a, be a good way to raise money in the short term.
That's gonna hit, hit nine months.
Yeah, I'll call, I'll, I'll go, I'll go up there tomorrow.
I mean, that's just an idea, I mean, if we can take the specs up there and, and, it don't have, probably doesn't have two hundred miles on it, if, if that, you know.
How much insurance we paying on that truck or not?
Probably get up.
That's another.
No challenge.
Yeah, it's not killing it, being neutral.
Well, I'll do that.
Just trying to think of things to get us out in front of some.
Yeah.
Financial burden.
Yeah. Um.
But that's trucks under contract, can we do that?
Hey, you sell it, yeah, we can sell it and pay, pay that off and.
Then we just have a brush truck.
Yeah.
We have a brush truck, which we got here.
Which we did have, needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And this is probably a crazy question, but where did all of the offer money go? I, that just popped in my head. We had three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars at one time, I know we've spent, spent some on different things, but I just don't know how we spent all of that.
A hundred and fifty. Stormship.
Oh, yeah, cause we didn't do them.
We would have to go back and look, cause that was done before we got here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We would have to go back and look for that, but we can look for that.
Well, we did that for the, for the advice of Kirk Smith too, to not get through FEMA.
We need to stop this in hand when it comes to us, our money, that's our money, we're responsible for the money.
Well, it would've cost the same thing.
No.
It would've cost the same thing. You think people would've, would've paid for it?
Yeah, they, they paid for, her mines and they always pay that percentage, they gonna pay that percent if you go through the paperwork.
Yeah.
I went through the paperwork.
They, they pay like, oh.
Eighty percent.
In, at eighty, seventy.
They paid eighty percent of mine.
Eighty percent of mines too, if you do the paperwork, in the paperwork, you just gotta do the paperwork, that's all that was.
I know we paid fifty something for keys to the cities, that's like a hundred and fifty, I'm just wondering.
Representative Sewell was, uh, just posted that Moundville, she got four for Moundville in that area.
Right.
Yeah, and that was five hundred thousand dollars, that's all that, yeah. But we're not in her.
But we have the same representation.
Yeah.
That maybe could've been.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
Did the paperwork, just do the paperwork on the, keep your mind.
Oh, and we have to make sure we get our voter list in the paper, we're working on that.
Oh, yeah, that's been a, that's been a, Dorinda and Tracy and Pete, that we've all working to get, to get that going. And what we do, what we, what we need to do for the future is to set it up actually like they told us for the twenty, thirty census, so we'll be ready to capture all the citizens that we know we have in the federal census. So, Zane Davis and Molly Dodson with the, and then Dennis Strickland said that there's some things that we need to put in place for the future. So, you know, that's.
One time I talked to Dennis, he says we get a letter every January for that, whenever you have census or whenever something's been annexed in, if y'all put a mailbag.
So, remind me, can you tell us what we standing now with it? Which you are the legal person for us to ask, where we standing now for getting ready for the election?
We're ready.
Huh?
We're ready. I mean, we got.
Ready to trace?
Now, the voter list is up to date, um, we're just waiting on qualifying to end and then we'll turn all our stuff over to the E S and S people to print the ballots and, so, yeah.
Do the person, do we get a, do the person that signed up, do they get a package that they have to send to the ethics?
You just see that online, but we have packets for people that have qualified.
Everybody.
Y'all have.
What was that?
Mike, motion is yours.
Thank you, Mike.
Ready to vote for motion is yours, second. Second, Don, discussion's over, all in favor?